When it comes to making plans, you are the best. What about those barbecues you plan in detail for your family? Or your daughter's first costume party? It was out of this world. The same way you plan each detail for those moments, start planning to protect you and your loved ones from a natural disaster. Sign up for local weather and emergency alerts, prepare an emergency kit, and make a family communications plan. Protecting your family is the best plan you can make.
Good evening to everyone in the room. Good evening. It is 6:00 and we'd like to begin our July 17th regular school board meeting. Thank you for everyone who came tonight and anybody that's watching online. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, liberty and justice.
As we approve our agenda this evening, I'd like to draw everyone's attention to 7B on the agenda. Can we scroll ahead to that so the audience can follow along as well? We're not changing the agenda, we're just expanding the title from Substitute Pay Rates, which was on the tentative agenda, to Substitutes, Activities, and Community Ed Pay Rates. And that will include Barbara Wilson, Gary Revening, and Jeremiah Mack. So we have the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
With the changes. Moved by Melissa, seconded by Casey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please no. Motion passes 6-0. Citizens' comments, we do not have any this evening, so moving on to fiscal stability. We have consent agenda items, approval of their minutes from June 20th, personnel matters, bills, Peacock, Amazon Card, and the wires. Members received all of this links and information last week and has had a chance to review it and ask any questions. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. Moving to collaborative connections, we do have a lot of very generous donations on the list for today, and Superintendent Olson is going to discuss that for us.
All right, so our donors this board meeting, we have several of them, United Way, $2,500 for the resilience conference. And as you will see, the resilience conference is named several times on here, so I'll just give a shout out to Sarah Welk and the work that she has done in putting forth, putting our district on the map for this type of conference where we are going to be hosting experts across the state, both as the resident experts and the people who want to receive that information and get training and spend a day preparing for the school year. So thank you, Sarah, for putting that together. We look forward to that day of learning together, and we'll definitely have you report afterwards. So give a little snapshot of how that day goes, because it's really the first of its kind in the area, and for our own district to be one that is hosting that, having it in the names that you are, we are blessed. And just, I think all of us as leaders are excited to see what this first annual can turn into, but you got it going. United Way, $5,000. This is a common grant that, I'm sorry, gift that comes our way from United Way, and we help our students in need with different personal items that they need in their life. United Way, $10,000, and this is our mindfulness program of just teaching students different tools to help different emotions that they feel throughout a school day. And we're very happy to carry that one forward again this school year. We have, once again, $500 for Resiliency Conference, $2,000 from Christensen Group Insurance, and then Montessori Lions bringing forward $2,000 for the resilience conference. $500 from Horseman for the resilience conference. Little Mountain PTO is putting forth $5,500 for a refresh of the Little Mountain Library Furniture Displays Organization, and just kind of making that amazing space even more amazing, just giving it a little update. Anderson Dahlin Incorporated, $820 for STEM CAD and design of CO2 Construction Module at Little School. And then just one last one, we have supplies donated from HTO Outfitters, Marine and Sports Repair, going to the Montessori fishing team.
We want to say we have a resolution to accept these. Do I have anyone that would read them?
It will be resolved by the Montessori School Board, number 882, to gratefully accept the following donations: United Way, $2,500; United Way, $5,000; United Way, $10,000; Christensen Group Insurance, $500; Montessori Lions, $1,000; Horseman, $500; Little School PTO, $5,500; Anderson Dahlin Incorporated, $820; Outfitters, Marine and Sports Repair Supplies, Montessori Fishing Team.
Seconded.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0 with a very hearty and sincere thank you to all of our donors. There's a lot of things that we can't do without these donations because there isn't any other pot of money that we can tap, so we just want to say a very sincere thank Sorry for that little delay there. I have a new device, so I'm having a little trouble switching between the screens. Moving on to board announcements, I'm very blessed this evening to be able to make a very important announcement for the school district and for our community. The school board met earlier this month and earlier this summer, and we worked on year three for Superintendent Olson's contract, as you know, from our previous meetings, and we wanted to show another way that we could appreciate all of the hard work that Superintendent does. I don't think people realize how many hours he puts in, how dedicated he is to our students, and what an amazing role model and mentor he is. And so as we brainstormed a little bit, we decided to submit a nomination to the Minnesota Association of School Administrators for Superintendent of the Year for our superintendent, Mr. Eric Olson. And I understand that he has accepted that nomination moving forward. So that is something really exciting for us. We wish him all the best and hope that he will show himself and our district really well as he moves through the process. To let people know what the process is, I believe sometime in October, the school association will make a determination for the state of Minnesota, and then if our superintendent is so lucky to be chosen, and I hope he is, he will move on to an interview process in Washington, DC, and then on in the spring to the National Association of Superintendent of the Year process. I don't think I said that very fluently, but you all kind of get the idea. So it's something, it's a way that we could show our appreciation. He has not been real happy about it. He's a very bashful, very humble person, and we're very lucky to work with him. We're lucky to have the board that we have, that we can come together and try to do something like this for our community, for our district, and for our superintendent. So that's my announcement for this evening. So moving on to some more celebrations, one of our longtime and very beloved administrators has decided to move into a new phase of her life. And so Dr. Barbara Wilson is going to be leaving us gradually, I understand, not all at once, as she moves into retirement. So I think Superintendent Olson would like to make a few remarks.
I'd like to stand up and just acknowledge that I have the great fortune to come in and stand.
Oh, yay!
When you're a leader of HR, that means many different things to many different people. And what I've learned, what it means to me, is that I get to work side by side with somebody who knows how to do hard things. I get to work side by side who has a great vision for people. I get to, I've gotten the opportunity to work side by side with a person who could initiate change and put a lot of weight on her back to carry things through the planning stages, all the way to implementation stages. She's built many different HR structures for us, including onboarding evaluation systems for all of our employees, which we didn't have prior to her coming here. She has worked tirelessly with her small department to continue to improve processes between business and HR. And then just, you know, there's, then, you know, those are all the big things, and along with new teacher orientation, and along with our staff meetings throughout the year. She gives employees time, she gives them her expertise, and then she also has that unified lens to really carry the district forward and keep the district in mind. One of the things that you find out right away is that she has amazing talents to be very diversified. She could work with curriculum, she could work with social workers, she could work with business, she could work with myself, she could work with school board members, policy, and she can go not only just touch the surface level of all those, but she can go deep in each one. And that's the sign of a real leader, is somebody who can go deep in everything that they touch. And I always knew she just would come to work, and she worked to serve kids. She always had that student focus as her lens. And I'm just, I've been really fortunate to work with her because I've gotten the opportunity to see all the big things that she has carried forth. And, you know, and when you're in HR, sometimes you don't get the credit for that, but she's taught us how to hire. She's taught us how to unify as a district, and that's my most important thing as a leader, is trying to unify us. That's what I spend every moment of my day trying to figure out how to do, and she had lots of solutions for that action. So appreciate Dr. Barbara Wilson, and love to have us come up here, and some gifts for her from the administration and from the school board, and all of us couldn't be more proud. You've taught us a lot, leaving a legacy of us learning.
Thank you. I just want to say, one thing I do want to say is, it's been my privilege to work for Montessori Schools. It's a great district, there's many great leaders here, and there's many great families and students. So the teachers, all of the staff, really, I can't say enough good about them. One of the things that I really appreciate about working with administrators, the board members, the teacher leaders, is they really care so much about kids and families. That's bottom line, that's why everyone's here. And one of the things Eric shared with us early on was a quote about the man in the arena. You know, the people, they don't just talk about what they're doing, but they do it. And that's what your leaders do here. So as a board in a community, I hope you really value that going forward. I feel like I should be saying thank you to you and buying you gifts and flowers, so it really has been an honor to work here. Thank you.
Thank you for celebrating. I know you don't like it. Well, Fireman Allen, I've got public disloyal affection about as much as...
I don't mind, I just want to call this attention. Humble people.
Thank you. This is the worker. Don't start.
Dr. Wilson, it's going to be very difficult for us to find someone of her caliber, but I'm confident there's a lot of, they call it the war on talent, the war to find talent. And so we've been so lucky with all of our administrative hires, our new principals and everything over the last year. Well, I'm confident there's someone out there that will step into the very large shoes that Barb is leaving behind, and I'm glad, thank you, Barb, for being willing to stay into August and September to help with the transition. I think that's really the sign of a true professional. So thank you again for everything I've learned from you, and the rest of us as well. So, moving, so sad. Moving on to item D, we have an update. I know a lot of the community is very interested in our ongoing process, looking at our school start times, and Superintendent Olson is going to give us another update tonight about the school start times process that we're still in, and what we have upcoming in the next couple of weeks in that process.
And before I jump into that, I'm going to just circle back to one of the board announcements that I just wanted to make reference to and give the community a heads up on, is the Wall That Heals coming to Pinewood on Thursday. Thursday, the 20th, at 10 is the introduction program. That'll be a program, I think, for the ages, to truly honor our veterans and offer a place of healing for the next four years. So really excited anytime we get to partner with American Legion, the VFW, or community groups that honor our veterans and celebrate the people who pay the sacrifice, and sometimes the ultimate sacrifice. And that's why there's memorials, the Wall That Heals, is to remember who are serving and have served, and then obviously those who have also made the ultimate sacrifice. So it's a great honor for us to be able to partner with this organization. It's really, it was led as a collaborative between the city, after Pinewood Elementary has just been pulling us together as a community. Yesterday, board member Seben and board chair Zbarth had the opportunity to be part of the parade and be amongst the float of the Wall That Heals. And I think I heard Jamie say it best when she said, "I don't know if I'll get the smile off my face," you know, just being able to honor our veterans, walk in the parade, and see so many of our community members coming up to there, and we were doing our part for the people and our troops and our veterans. So great experience. With that, and I'll circle back to the 24-25 school start time update, and I'm really, I'll just really try and condense and give an update of what happened last, since the last board meeting. We were able to have one town hall meeting, next slide, Gavin. And right now, what we're doing is just making sure that we have gathered community input. And so, like I said, we had one town hall meeting. Through the process of that first town hall meeting, we had many great discussion items, and one of the items was, hey, a town hall is a great, they're at 5:00, that doesn't help all of us. And so one of the attendees said, you know, could you do a virtual one? And so we have added a virtual one. So this slide here just makes reference at our next town hall meeting, in similar fashion to the last one, will be on the 26th at 5:00 at the Montessori Middle School auditorium. And then there's a virtual option, one that we're going to add. Do have the date for that one now, if we could, be August 10th at 6:00. So we'll get those publicized and be part of that. The virtual option, because we've done virtual town hall meetings before, we know that one of the best formats for that is to really get questions, get opportunities to have questions come in, and then it'll be a talking session through those questions so that you can give people organization in a format that hopefully allows them the chance to see their questions be answered that they got a chance to ask. Some people are quiet during town hall meetings, and they don't ask as many questions, so getting questions in a virtual format ahead of time is often what our teachers were doing too, to give everybody that voice. So that's a little bit, go ahead Gavin, next slide. Once again, I think it's just important to keep showing what the times are ultimately be voting on. As you look up here on the screen, we have kindergarten center at 8:00 in the morning, elementary starting at 7:50. I'll just kind of pause there, because if we just do a look back in time, 18 years ago, you know, elementary started at 9:00, and so we have reduced that a little bit down to 8:50, and we've tried 8:45. And the reason why we have continued not going the other way is because elementary teachers have always wanted the opportunity to capture the younger students when they're the most vibrant. I feel like we've lost a lot of elementary's, the elementary age students, they start at 9:00. Opposite can be true for the secondary students. Oftentimes, you'll hear our secondary teachers talk about eating copious amounts of caffeine in the morning as they come to the doors, and really being lethargic that first school hour. So a lot of the research that has been centered on has been focused on the secondary students. There are many advantages by taking our school start time of 7:30 right now and moving it to a later start time of 8:15, even though it's only 45 minutes, it gives many more minutes of daylight during much of the school year in Minnesota. Not all of us have winter, that's pretty long here. Just giving our newest drivers a little bit more light helps, and the research that shows that these times are good for the sleeping rhythms of students that are in their teenage years. There's not a lot of research, and we'll kind of move to some of the people that we have started to align ourselves as far as like the research part of it goes. But we've been fortunate enough, go ahead, next slide. We've been fortunate enough to partner with Dr. Kyler Wallstrom, who's really been a lead- We've been fortunate enough to partner with Dr. Kyler Wallstrom, who's really been a leader for decades, for about 30 years. She has, she's testified in Florida's recent legislation for school start times. And Florida has some law to have their secondary students start later. And so I know that there are several states that are moving to state adopted legislation. We've had many of our schools around us be, have made this change several years ago. We as a district did have this come forth to the community back in 2016. And that committee was stopped after a few sessions because it just didn't feel like the right time for the Monticello community. We're hoping now by coming together, unifying, listening to our families that who have challenges, that we can take the next year to plan for those challenges and to truly make success for our students. It's driven at the core by the students and then, and trying to capture their best learning and their biological rhythms. But then that doesn't mean that there aren't going to be challenges. So like I said, we want to plan for those challenges. And what better way to plan for them is to talk to people, a person who has done 20, I think, since 1996, she's been studying this. She's worked with many different states. So right next, I'd like to just get this video out. We had Pleiwoski and Gavin Nelson go down and ask questions for Dr. Kyler Wallstrom and allow her to answer, just to, decades of research to be able to come out into a interview setting.
You know, it's interesting, when I was a teacher and then a school principal, I realized that it is the lives of our children that is our future. The later start times seem to be a way to address the sleep needs of teenagers, the benefits that we see for these students who have more sleep. What happens is, and I think this is an important piece of information, the biology of the teen brain is such that during adolescence, the brain, teenage brain cannot really fall asleep much before 11 or 11:15 at night. By the same token, it doesn't wake up until about 8:00 in the morning. So the human brain and it's at its beneficial time for sleep is nine hours and 15 minutes. In fact, actually, up until about 2018, more than 2,000, and I'm not exaggerating, 2,000 studies have been done on adolescent sleep. Students that have adequate sleep have less depression, less tendency to use drugs, cigarettes, and alcohol. They have, get better grades, they do better in sports, they are in less car accidents because they are not falling asleep at the wheel and they're not running into us on the road or onto, into the ditch and causing a car accident. So I did an early study in 1996 in a high school, local high school. And when I was interviewing the principal and the teachers and the psychologist and the nurses and so on, the answers I got were incredible. Wrote up the report in 1996 and then in 1997, the Minneapolis Public Schools, a much larger district of 52,000 students at the time, adopted the idea of the later starting time. And I did an identical study as I had done in the suburban district prior. And I found the same results, even though I was in a district previously that it was a wealthy school district. Minneapolis couldn't have been more different because of the diversity of economics and students and so on. But the students' response to the later start time was identical. They were happier, they were more well-rested, everything was beneficial. The other two things that have happened policy-wise nationally is that California, as a state, passed legislation in 2019 that the entire state of California mandated that all public high schools as of 2022, which is this past school year, begin their schools, high schools, no earlier than 8:30. High school and middle school no earlier than 8:00 statewide. It's remarkable. That affects millions, millions of teenagers in the state of California. Recently, this past May, which is only a couple of months ago, the state of Florida also discussed and passed the legislation that mandated school starting times similar to California so that the high schools cannot start any earlier than 8:30, middle schools can't start any earlier than 8:00. To think that this is going to be an easy change, mm-mm. You're talking about changing people's family schedules, bus schedules, the rhythm of the community, how people commute to work, how the traffic works, lunch, all the different times that lunch is served, how childcare is addressed, the use of parks and recreation, how do the shared facilities that are shared between parks and rec and the school district, the fields, the hockey rinks and all those things, how all that gets settled. You don't make a decision based on just athletics or just buses or just childcare. A community is a holistic place, it's a holistic experience for everybody. And the community makes the decisions about what's best for the students and for the kids. And if the belief in the benefits and the well-being of the children, and they are our children, if you believe that that's what you're all about, then you make the best decisions. The best decisions keep the child as the number one focus. And we adults are charged with making their lives as healthy and as successful as possible.
Move forward that even experts who have longest longitudinal study on the topic that I can find in the nation, but I think the world, she says that it's not going to be easy. I mean, it's going to be hard and there's things that we're going to need to, you know, either know prior to August vote or start listening, prepare after that August vote. And after a decision's made, we either move, make sure that we, it's obviously got to be our goal, but like she said, ends with keeping the student as our number one priority. So I think that part we have, I look forward to seeing the direction of the district because we have had a task force. We've been talking about it for quite some time. I am either ready to take next steps in full year of communicating answers to question formats throughout the school year or something that would be what we do. Starting, just at 7:00, I've been a principal of starting school at 10:00. I mean, we can make whatever, it's a decision that's a serious one, like I know we will. Vote.
I'd like to just add to that, that, you know, we all received a lot of emails and, you know, concerns from community members. And I'm very proud to say that I think our district has not implemented a top-down, it's our way or the highway kind of thing. When I put out a little bit of a survey to find out how other districts, how long they were in the process to make the decision, we've exceeded them four times over. The longest one I heard was three months. And we're at 13 months now, just in my time here. So I think we've really demonstrated from a board perspective that we want to listen. We don't just want to come in and, you know, uniformly make a decision and impose it on everyone else. We've really tried to do everything that we can, understanding that it's maybe not going to be anything we choose, you know, may be a poor fit or a good fit for some families and not for others. So the least that we can do is show that we're willing to listen and that we've been in that process for a very, very long time already. Does anybody else have any other?
Yeah, I think one thing we should probably make mention of is the change in the model minutes per day. The goal is to not extend the school year into the summer. It's going to be addressed by the half-day reduction in other items. Just want to make sure that was said, that gets altered, because I've gotten a lot of questions on that.
So the reduction of the half-day, like talking about would be the first priority of days that you would, instead of having those half-days you would implement, you would go back. We talked about that at town hall meeting and I'm sure parents wouldn't be too sad if those half-days go away. I think they are a little bit wrenchy for our staff and for our community. So that part, so very well noted. And then like Casey said, the other piece is that there are two instructional days that we will have to add and calendaring becomes important. Many of us who've been in the district know that our district has had anywhere from 165 to 173 days over the last two decades. Many different days and those have never been a big deal for the community. They usually have to do with the calendar themselves itself. But also, it also has been a response from leaders to add additional days at times too. So we'll take calendaring very serious as part of the process. We have this year's calendar built, so the 23-24 school year calendar has been built. The 24-25 school calendar has not been built. It would definitely, could be built very quickly after the votes, mindfully, but at a time that goes along at the same time and parallels the year of preparing for the 24-25 school year.
Another community concern that's been voiced is on how long school bus routes will be, especially for the younger students. And that's something that we as a district are dedicated in making sure, we're working with the bus company and we've capped that time to not exceed. So that's something that we'll work with and be dedicated to, to make sure those younger students aren't on buses for an exorbitant amount of time.
Currently in the contract, it's between that 50 and 60 minutes. And it's so awesome to work for a school board that wants to audit that, look at that, and have that be part of our discussions with our bus partners and families.
Any other board members have any comments? I'd like to just reiterate those two dates coming up for people that are interested in the school start times discussion is July the 26th, which is a Thursday evening at 5:00 PM. Am I correct on the time on that, Clay? 5:00 PM at the middle school auditorium. You can come in person. We'll have as much of the board there as we're able to have, but we'll be in a listening capacity at that meeting. And then again on April, I'm sorry, August the 10th, we're going to plan for a virtual Zoom-type conference for people to be able to join that wherever they happen to be. And there will be more details posted on the website and communicated to the community in that amount of time. Dates? Okay, very good.
Yeah, one last thing to add is during those, we're not just sitting there listening, we're taking notes and those are dispersed through all of us and we'll go through those issues as well, so.
Yeah, Casey took voluminous notes at the first, we had five of six board members at the first town hall, which was a really good turnout for us. And Casey took extensive notes which have been shared among all the board members at this point, just from the comments made by the community members and the questions that were asked.
Yeah, I just wanted to convey, we're not just going there to appear. We're listening.
We have to be careful though, because, you know, with open meeting laws and all that, we're not there to conduct a meeting or take a vote or anything like that. We're in a town hall listening capacity. That's kind of the legal term for that. Anything else on school start times before we move on? Okay, we're going to move on to teaching and learning, section seven. And we're going to welcome to the podium Lori Hansen, our high school, one of our two high school principals, who's going to brief us on a new course proposal for the high school students. Welcome Lori.
Thanks for letting me take time. I'm here again to propose a new course. This goes under that pathway model that we're trying to continue to build. In particular, this is the health and human, or health and human services field. This course, as you can see, is coming from Haisi Skuzza in partnership with Becca Kunkle, who is one of our pathway coordinators. So Becca has her fingers in just a lot of areas and exploring a lot of opportunities. And this is one that came to us. And I think it's that area of need again and interest that we're seeing, not only from our students, but also from our community as well. It's called CIS Intro to Exercise Science. We will be partnering with Anoka Ramsey Community College. It's going to be an exploratory class that presents students interested in the health and human services field, a wide range of what it looks like to be in exercise science. Not only from the, and I got to read it here because this is not my area of expertise. So it's coming right out of the anatomy, physiology, psychology, nutrition, and businesses, and career exploration with everything that goes to it, including sports, recreation, health, sales, education, and fitness, to name a few. So our students are telling us through a number of avenues that this is an area that they are continuing to be interested in. It would be open to 11th and 12th graders. It's a one semester class that we would put in the second semester of this upcoming school year if it's approved. And right now, we believe that we have a full course of students that are interested and ready to load into their schedules if it does get approved. So again, I think knowing that we've been up here a number of times, it's really coming to you, trying to generate as many pathways as we can so that students can explore their interests and find relevant opportunities for them for post-secondary employment or career college readiness. So that's kind of the snapshot of it. There are some prerequisites that go with it. They would, students would have to have a minimum GPA. And then, as I'd mentioned, we will be partnering for concurrent enrollment through Anoka Ramsey. This talks a lot of the details of it that comes of the plan that Anoka Ramsey will partner with us. So you can see just a snapshot of what I summarized, but Ms. Skuzza is licensed and has the appropriate credentials to teach it. And so she is, this would be her second potential new course that she would be offering to the students this upcoming school year if approved. Questions? That's a really quick snapshot, but just, you know, as I think we've shared here before, really trying to be mindful of what we offer to our kids that feels like it's providing that experiential, that exposure, and exploratory options in really relevant fields that are going to serve them as they walk through our system, but then, like I said, after they graduate and walk through our doors.
I saw the implementation for this is the 23-24 school year, which is coming up really quickly. Can you just discuss, I think the students, a lot of the high school students already did their schedules last in the spring. How are you going to accommodate that?
Yeah, and knowing that this was something that we were really, we're doing a couple things at the same time. So knowing that we wanted to get this, but had a little bit of legwork behind the scenes with not only our staff at Anoka Ramsey. Ms. Kunkle did a student interest survey and so she's got a list of kids that are ready to jump into this class, that it should be able to fit into their schedule if we can make it. So as soon as you say go, then we go back to the building level, get it into infant campus and look at that student list and start to build it in their schedule if it's a priority or that we can make it work for them.
Fall semester now.
Or it would be semester two, so spring semester. So it gives us a little bit more time. Because knowing that nothing ever, the timeline never lays out as smoothly as we need it to meet our deadlines. We did a number of things at the same time, just waiting for Anoka Ramsey, this meeting, our scheduling timelines. So we've got all of those things in place, ready just to move forward if we are able to.
Can you also talk about, I see this as two college credits through Anoka Ramsey Community College. So what department or what category, obviously if a student takes a CIS English class, they're transferring the credits into an English category when they get to the university. Where would the exercise physiology class fit for most students?
Yep. So again, it falls under that health field because that's an area that I think we continue to hear from our students that there's an interest in our community as Becca is building partnerships and relationships with local communities, organizations, businesses, there's a need. And I think we're well aware of that. And they're coming back saying, there's just a tremendous amount of opportunity that our kids are there, that are available to them in that health field. And I think we are just looking to build some of those bridges for our students. It's not an area that we have real strongly developed in the high school yet, but it's a priority for us. And so when I was back, I think we presented a couple of months ago, the CNA course, we're still waiting for that to come together in partnership with St. Cloud Tech and Community College. So that's kind of sitting here. We want that to come to fruition, we want. We want to be able to implement that, but we've got to keep going with other things as well. And this is just another avenue that we found would probably be a good fit for our students.
So for a four-year student applying to a four-year college, the two-year, two college credits through the community college would possibly go under an elective category?
Yep, elective.
They wouldn't go under a science category?
I'd have to check on that. My, it's coming out of the health and science, so I'd have to, I don't want to answer without knowing definitively where students' credit would land. My gut tells me the health and science field, but I don't want to answer and come back and say, nope, I'm wrong, it's the elective category. But that's why I think we're learning as we go through this more. It's a great question. We are very mindful when we work, in particular, Anoka Ramsey has been outstanding. When we're doing these things, are we making it easily transferable or usable for our kids? So we don't want to put them in a situation or a course that they're going to get college credits, but they can't take with them. And so I think that Becca's been very mindful of making sure that anything that she comes to recommend to Matt and I, she's got a lot of those legworks because the pathway isn't just 912 or 612 here. We've got to make sure that once they leave our system, that 12th onto their post-secondary schooling, trades, VOTAC, whatever it is, it's manageable for them. They're walking away with tools and they're walking away with relevant education. So I think it's a great question because we want to make sure that these kind of opportunities are serving our kids and setting them up very, very well, whatever path that ends up being post-high school.
I think it also depends on the college, too. They can put where they want to put it. Sometimes it could be an elective or sometimes it could be in the health field, so.
With the schedules already set, trying to imagine the holes that that might create on the student schedules, it's probably just one here, one there type of thing, so maybe not a very big deal. What does that do to Ms. Skuzza's schedule that she already had planned for spring semester?
I've got it earmarked. I do. Like, because of exactly what you're implying, it, for us to go retroactively and to build in something like this when we know the needs, scheduling is just a really complex puzzle. And so knowing that we were working towards this, we've got a couple, if this, we can get this, but if not, we can get this. And so we always have options to make sure that we can fill a staff schedule, but also if we're going to put something in this, we're going to strategically place it where students are going to be able to access it as well. So it's not something that I walk out of here and go, oh, let's figure out. I've got our puzzles ready to go and we're ready to push go if this goes. So we have to. It's way too complex to go after the fact and say, let's see if we can make this work. We want to make sure we can make it work so that we can be as well-informed as we can when we come here and make sure that if we're going to do things like this, we're really trying to set this in place for kids. We want our learners to maximize the opportunities that come out of this. And so we know what we're trying to do to make it seamless.
It looks like from that slide, list and estimate technology, materials, equipment needed, we'll utilize current classroom setup, so you don't need to buy anything to make this happen?
No. We will look at giving, allocating some time for Ms. Skuzza for the course development, so she'll take the materials from Anoka Ramsey. We'll create our own curriculum map that goes along with it. We'll use a current classroom somewhere in the building and then, so she'll have that classroom set up. And then any materials, maybe an electronic class or textbook, but that will be part of when she develops this course right now. But in regards to anything in a setup, it's our classroom.
Can you go back to the slide before this one? So there was one section under the predicted number of sections to be added, one section per semester plus field experience. Can you discuss the field experience component?
I think that falls under the exposure when it looks at some of the things when you're looking at, not only bringing outside experts in, but also getting some of those exposure to the real-world components of, and I'll go back to athletic training, physical therapy, occupational therapists, nurses, coaches. That's that experiential piece that we want to be able to provide for kids. So as Heidi goes through and develops that, she will work very closely with Becca to make those local partnerships. If it's, you know, coming out of, and I'm in a blank right now, any of the local hospitals, the centers, anything like that, we will look at a two-way pathway to get kids in there and then to bring local experts into the building as well.
So they would leave the building during the school day to go and get their field experience? Is there a certain number of hours that are required?
I don't think it's that. I think field experience, I think it's more of that field trip. Think along that line. You're not, they're not going out to do a 20-hour following of a professional. It's more of exposure to what that day-to-day job looks like. So I think probably a better word right there would be like a field trip, job exposure, job shadow maybe for a day.
So would they be doing that as a whole-class experience or as individuals?
I think a little bit of both.
What I like about this is that it aligns directly with the career pathways that they're exposed to in middle school. I like that this continues that. Fills a gap.
How do you do a field trip if it's one class period?
Yep. So like, a good example, all of our juniors are required to take careers. And one of the opportunities with that is they'll just miss a day of their regular classes. So they'll go to St. Cloud State and St. Cloud Tech for the day to get experience to, but then they just miss their other six classes. And this would be a similar situation, or maybe it's a half a day. And then the students are responsible for any work that they miss that day.
You had to guess how many days in the semester that they would miss. I know you, you're not setting that up, but you got to oversee it. Are we talking about a handful or 10?
It really is, it's really dependent on each student's individual schedule. So one good example, every junior has the opportunity, so it's not required. It's an opportunity for them in their careers course. So once during one of the semesters, they have the opportunity to go to St. Cloud Tech and St. Cloud State. Another example is our AP physics class. They go on a field trip. Our CIS psych and chem classes have required labs up at St. Cloud State because some of those partnerships. Our CIS intro to ed kids, they have to go to Anoka Ramsey on campus for a day of their learning. So it really is dependent on any student's schedule. So if you're looking at a student that has any number of what I just listed, they're going to miss two to three to four. If you're looking at a student that maybe has one or two, then that's what they will be missing throughout the day. Some of it is half-day, some of it is a full day. We have a lot of movement in the high school. Our students are coming and going tremendously. And I think that's the piece that as we look at that, these types of classes, the CIS classes, the higher-level classes, especially when we're talking about that real-world learning, that experiential piece is really just a foundational component of it. They are going to be leaving our building and we have to figure out how to support those kids, but also help them manage what the rigor and the load of it looks like as well. So it's a great question, and I'd love to say one, or I'd love to say five. It is truly dependent on each individual's student's schedule.
It sounds like the transportation to these experiences is maybe folded into or planned into this already. It wouldn't be a separate standing transportation cost.
It comes from a number of different places. So sometimes it comes from grants, sometimes it comes from things, like sometimes it comes from their department budget. But there's a number of avenues that fund the transportation component of it. And again, we try to be very, I hope we've continued to show, we try to be very mindful of the financial component as well, but the reality is, is running CIS classes, they are expensive to their system, but so worthwhile, so relevant, and so what they're doing for kids is just really important, we believe. And that's why we continue to come here and share this with you, and that's why we want to partner with Anoka Ramsey. That's why we want to bring these things in, knowing that we're being very mindful on the financial end as well.
And what is the pathways course?
So I think an easy, it's a rebranding of us. So I think if we were to say elective, you all would have a vision in your mind of what an elective offering is. We're trying to build in this culture of a pathway, allowing kids to find what their interests are as early as sixth and seventh grade, when Tony and Becca are coming down to the middle school to do some interest inventories, some surveys. So to help them transfer that into that eighth-grade world that you talked about, where they're getting exposure to the STEM, really finding a pathway. What M-CIS pathway do you find? So really, it's us using those two words interchangeably because we want this belief, find a path for yourself here at the Monticello High School. If it's health and human services, if it's a military path, if it's a workforce, whatever that is, let's get you there and let's get you exposed to it.
I could, I'm just going to give a couple people shout-outs because of that discussion. It just makes me think of a timeline, and I'm going to give a few people shout-outs here. So Mark, really awesome question about the budget. And one of the first things that Barb did for Tina and I, Tina and I were talking about how do we get our whole district, all of our behaviors of making decisions at the right time? And so Barb set up a meeting, several meetings with Tina and myself. First, the Wayzetta HR person who was there to show us systems of establishing your budget process, class size, and all the decisions that you make, you controlling your own, owning that. So as we move forward with new people, we talk about some of those things. We talk about candidates when they come in and what are you looking for, really know what you're looking for throughout the process so that when you're hiring, you're being mindful of, if I do this, can I afford that? And the high school is really, this ends up being a demonstration of their process aligning with registration now. And I mean, we had to push hard to get you to, not push hard, but like, it's a push on you to meet some of those deadlines to, because budget process in a school district is January, February, you have to make staff decisions in March. And that's hard because you're just trying to, all those registration pieces and knowledge for students to make good decisions for themselves. But everything has been streamed, has been pushed back. That knowledge is really deep. Our principals do an amazing job of understanding those behaviors and undone role here. But that was one of those things that nobody knows that Barb and Tina established that for us, so that hopefully we are able to look at big pictures like that very question that you asked.
Any other discussion or questions?
I like that we're adding more CIS classes for the.
Thank you. Well, this is an action item, so we have to take action on this today. So do we have anyone to move the new course?
I move to approve the Monticello High School new course proposal, Exercise Science as presented.
Okay.
Motion made by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. Congratulations.
Thank you. We are very grateful for our kids. We appreciate it.
We'd like to hear more about it as the program unfolds. It'd be exciting to hear.
They have lots of updates.
Yeah, this is exciting. Moving on to item 7B, and we're going to have a discussion from Dr. Barb Wilson, Gary Revanig, and Jeremiah Mack on substitutes, activities, and community education pay rates.
Okay, we'll start with substitutes, if you want to pull the sub rates up. So every year in about August, we look at our substitute rates for the coming year and try to make a determination if we need to increase them or hold. So I included on this chart our current rates, and the link on the local comparisons leads to six or seven surrounding districts who might be tapping the same substitutes on the shoulder to work there. So we just kind of looked at this to come up with some new rates for the next year. So the proposed rates for 23-24 would be to increase by $5 for subs, and it goes up incrementally the more they sub in our district. And then our retired teachers also start at a higher rate and sometimes get other special considerations depending on how hard to fill some of our substitute jobs are. So we're asking for small increases here in our day-to-day rates. The long-term sub rate of more than 30 days in one position, they're paid the very first step of the teacher contract. So it will go up to 224 right away at the start of the year, but when the teacher contract settles, that will likely go up as well, a little bit more. And our on-call building subs, we're proposing two for next year, and we're considering adding building subs at other buildings that had a difficult time filling their day-to-day sub rates. But our on-call building sub rate will go up to 210. They get caught in situations where they are doing more planning, more grading, more communications with teams, so the demand on them as they're in the building and become familiar with the building goes up, and they do a great job. So we want to keep them in our, in good, you know, happy with their salary and wanting to stay here. So those are our substitute rates for our teacher staff that we're proposing. And then when we looked at our support staff, we looked at raising the sub rates here as well. And one of the, one of the boundaries is what is our starting rate? So some categories, we were able to add a little bit more and still stay below a new higher starting rate because we want people to come to work permanently before us, too, of course, and we're hoping that some of our substitutes do that. So the proposed rates for custodians, food services, educational assistants, and secretaries are right below that starting rate for those employee groups. And then the behavior interventionist is new. The behavior interventionists are pairs that work with very difficult or challenging situations, classrooms. Just requires a little bit more training, a little bit more experience, so their sub rate is just a little bit higher. They're kind of like a specialized ESS. Also, I just put a little star there because especially in our support groups, if a retired person comes back and substitutes for us, we will frequently pay them the wage they left on, just out of respect for their experience and their ability to come, step in and do even more of the job since they've worked here, so. That's sub rates. You want to talk about sub rates? You have questions about them?
Can you spend a little bit more time on the on-call person?
Sure. Okay, so we had building subs in a couple of schools this year, and we started these during COVID, when it was very, very difficult to get subs on, you know, on a day-by-day basis. So building subs come to the building every day and they go where they're assigned. So they're like, they don't necessarily know what they're going to be teaching, but they will teach whatever we need them to teach that day. So the high school has had a building sub for the last couple of years, and that person will sometimes take two or three classes in a study hall. Sometimes they'll be working with, you know, a teacher like in a social studies area and do one all day. Sometimes they'll do or mix and match. Lori could probably talk a little bit more about them. But they really get to know the kids and the teachers in the building, and they just can do an excellent job filling in wherever needed and sometimes taking overload on that.
Scroll back up a little bit so we can see those.
So basically, they come to the building every day. Now, if they know they're not going to be here these three days, the administrators will give them a little leeway, but they basically work every teacher, student contact day.
So they're the stopgap instead of like the first order of being a substitute? So like, I'm a third-grade teacher, I want a substitute, I have my favorite. That person, that the building sub can't be my favorite, and that person to my classroom, they have to be the stopgap because what we're finding out is that if you use your most affluent or most sought-after substitute, then that person's taken up, and then you don't have a stopgap. So they are like the building stopgap, and they are, you know, sometimes taking multiple classes, they are doing things to hopefully give the students the best experience, that relationship, that.
relationship, that getting to know the building, they can do more because they know more.
It also has helped us have more consistent programming, like in our elementaries, when we're short a sub, we might have to pull a title teacher, or we might have to cancel music for the day and put them in a classroom, or maybe a social worker or someone will have to go in because the classroom teacher who's taking care of these kids every day is critical, it's first, first line of duty. So this has allowed us to have someone instead of canceling title services or instead of saying, you know, you don't get your music prep today. It's allowed us to keep that schedule more often. I'm not saying we're perfect at it, but it really has helped us that way, too. So we currently, we have a building sub at the middle school and at the, next year at the high school. And then we, I, we are, we have one at Pinewood. And these were all areas where we really struggled keeping building substitutes. So we really watched the sub rate, fill rate this year. And those were the, the middle, the high school never, you know, they were able to do a lot with their building subs, so their fill rate stayed pretty high. And the middle school and Pinewood had different subs that we started using and their fill rate really went up so that we were able to at least, the goal is 80% fill rate every day. And there will still be some days that will go below that, but in key areas, these building subs really helped us improve, which helps our teacher ranks across the board. It's really hard to go without your prep or to have to take two classes. Or our teachers do, they'll do anything for us, but we're just trying to protect their mental health as well and have some backups, backup plans.
If this started during COVID, do you think we're sticking with it for the foreseeable future?
I think for next year, I would recommend that we keep it in the hotspots that we used it this year. And then we have another hotspot that we're really watching closely. So yes, I would say watch. And if, you know, it ever got to the point where that person didn't have to work three days a week in September or, or whatever happens, then I think that's, would be your indicator that maybe you could narrow in the scope a little bit of when you would need a building sub. But for sure, in the, you know, flu season that starts in October, November, going all the way through the school year, and then in the spring, a lot of personal days, a lot of field trips, a lot of needs for subs for valid reasons. It's just hard to have, to be short every single day.
You know, I'm gonna look to Gary, Lori, maybe even Cindy. The year before COVID, we took a field trip, some people to Chaska, I believe. We started looking at, at, so this is before COVID, finding adequate substitutes at content level and level of, or higher secondary level, I should say, was becoming a challenge already. And so we started looking at other programs and the success they were having. Anything more on that? I mean, this was a field trip. Am I saying enough there? We started researching this prior to COVID to solve a problem.
My understanding is statewide substitutes are really in exquisitely short supply. So this is a very creative use and cost-effective use that keeps things staffed.
And there are districts that have had building subs for a decade, like Eric's talking about. I think we've been very fortunate to have a good sub core and a good sub base. But this even can help your day-to-day subs because they, they don't like to miss a Friday if they know you're short, you know? So it really helps everyone hopefully sustain longer. But this is not a new, it's new to us, but it's not new concept across the field.
Sorry to keep beating the horse here.
I'm glad you, I'm glad you're asking your question.
Can anybody be the building sub?
So we post the position and we hire for it. So we identify building subs.
These are rates proposed for the sub for that position.
So when, when a sub is hired here, her, they'll be hired at 2:00 a day. If they're a new employee, yeah.
And are they full-time? They come every?
They come every day.
Yeah.
And, but there is some flexibility, like I said, if they need a day here or there.
Yeah.
The principals are really good about working with them. So they're not paid a salary, they truly are paid day-to-day.
What happens when there's no sub needed that day and the building sub is there?
Well, when that happens, after we do the happy dance, we, then, there are a lot of ways that we could use our building subs. So we can always relieve special ed teachers for some paperwork days or evaluation days. We can put them on a grade level team that needs to get.
You're not sending them home?
No.
Okay.
Not typically. I mean, again, if they wanted to, we would probably be very flexible with them and allow them to, and sometimes they do just like the day. But overall, we would find work for them to do.
Do you ever share them between buildings?
Well, we haven't and we, you know, with COVID, we really didn't want to. That's kinda where this all started for us, but we probably could.
At least at the elementary level, because the licensing is.
Probably middle school to high school, too, but they kinda get known in their buildings, so it'll be.
And we have.
That's a problem that if we have, we can solve it, I'm sure.
We're trying something at the elementary next year, too. We're trying a licensed teacher and a building sub role so that person would not go home. I mean, so, you know, so they have the appropriate license, they have been a classroom teacher, they're under contract, they would not be sent home. And we have the same thing at the middle school.
Yeah.
We're trying some different things this coming year to see if they can even do more. And that's a year, a year basis.
Barb, what was the, or Dr. Wilson, I'm sorry.
Barb's good.
I hear both. I'm comfortable with either. What were the 21, 22 rates, if you recall, upon the day-to-day?
I did not put those on there, so I don't.
Did we make a big jump at some point? Because everybody else was like, oh my gosh, inflation's through the roof, we gotta jack everybody up.
We took a jump probably in 21, 22, and you know, we probably took a jump 22 to 23. And now we're kinda more on track with how the typical history has been more in the $5 to $10 range per year. And a lot of it is driven by our teacher contract. So as that goes up, we want to keep this, you know, on pace with that. Tina, that's about right typically, right, for our history? We took a couple big jumps, but.
Yeah, I think it's more.
More questions, subs? Okay. Do you want to go approve the sub rates now and then do activities? Or do you wanna go on and hear a little bit more about activities?
Is activities part of the?
Yep. We have, if you could click on.
Just go through all of them. I mean, unless anybody else, is everybody okay with that?
Okay, very good, thank you, thank you.
We're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is where, I mean, Jeremiah Mack and Gary Revnik are here as well.
So we met, we also included Andrea Greenwald, who is our magic adventure coordinator. We talked about pay rates for some of these positions through activities and community ed. So you can see the previous rates increases and I guess I'll let Gary talk a little bit more about these activities right here, these activity increases, and then we'll let Jeremiah talk a little bit more about.
So all the schools in our conference and surrounding schools are kinda struggling finding workers for after-school activities. And we're always comparing how schools are paying their workers. Some schools go at the flat fee, you get $75 working a night. Well, they might only be there two hours. Some say $50, whatever it might be, some go by the hour. We've been at $15 and I can't find workers. And Janice has been working many nights, taking tickets at our sporting events because we can't find people to come in. They flat-out have told us, well, we can go to Target or Walmart to make way more than 15. And it's just been hard filling our spots. And we've tapped the same couple people over and over again. So just looking at what other schools are doing, I think $19 is a little more reasonable. The other thing we had, we were at 15 this past school year and our students were making 1250. And the students would even say, well, I'm gonna go take a job at somewhere else in town because I can make more money. And then our adult workers are saying, well, I'm barely making more than the students are making. So we just met and tried to look at, what are other schools doing? What can we do that hopefully will draw some more interest from our staff? And 19 for adults seemed like a good point. Typically, they work more than two hours a night, but sometimes they might even be four hours depending on what job they're doing. They're working multiple basketball games, say at the table, or multiple sporting events where they have to put in extra time. You know, they can generate a little bit more money that way. I didn't like seeing the set rate of 50 or 75 because sometimes like swimming, for example, they might only work for an hour and a half. It just doesn't seem fair to everyone the same amount when they're not putting in the same time. So I do like the hourly rate, and I thought 19 seemed reasonable. And then our proposal for students was to go up to 14. So an adult would make $5 more than a student working.
Oh, that was my question, if it's the same job, why is there the split in the pay?
Yes, the adults are the ones that train the students then, and they're in charge of the money. And they're the ones that have to count, they have more responsibility. The students are just assisting the adults that are.
Okay.
Gary, we had a community question this week. There are requirements for volunteer hours for parents at some activities around in the surrounding communities. Can you talk about if we've ever had that system and how we got to the point that we are with just a straight salary type position?
Yeah. When I started as activities director 13 years ago, our concession workers were our coaches that had to volunteer two or three nights or bring parents in from their program. And it was hard to consistently try to train someone how to use the equipment in the concession stand. Here's how you pop the popcorn without sending off the smoke detector and so many different things that would, would come up. So we also, at that time, the school board and the school district went away from, we cut during budget cuts, the uniform budget that we had in our school district. So I proposed that we run concessions like a business and the money goes to buy all of the team uniforms so teams do not have to go out and fundraise. So when I did that, I ended up hiring one adult to be in the concession stand where they get paid, and then we bring in students. Larger games, I was just telling Mr. Decker in the, in the, out here in the audience that bigger events, we do have groups come in and they all volunteer, but I have to have someone in there that trains the volunteers. So like at a football game, when 15 parents or athletes come in, there's two adults that are showing them how to do everything so we're properly serving the food and making sure we're following all the codes that we have to do. So that's why they get paid. And then the profits, and I manage it, like I said, like a business, the profits all come in and then it goes back to all the teams when they need it. They get new uniforms every five years and they don't have to go out and fundraise for those.
Thank you.
And I do know that, I mean, I've sit, I sat on the hockey arena advisory board and organizations that use merely volunteers, I mean, it's great by principle, I mean, and many of the youth organizations do, but if you, you know, watch any of the minutes from those meetings, I don't care what sport, it's a challenge to get your workers into. And so it's one thing for people not showing up for a youth game where maybe it's a bonus, but when you come to a high school event, I mean, you accept, you expect a standard protocol, and so do our people. They wanna be treated with customer service. If you don't have that customer service at a level that we are managing, then we get complaints on that end, too. So I mean, we, I mean, we all believe in volunteerism, sure, but just to manage it, all you have to do is start poking around and ask questions of youth organization. Easy is it and how does it work? And it's really challenging. It really does run well and it makes us look very professional. I mean, over my five years, I think I've only seen or heard about one challenging incident from concession stand, but if I, it's up at every hockey meeting where, how do we get work? I mean, so it, problems come up at a rapid rate, type of system.
The other thing for the board, the concession workers, that's all out of the, basically, it's the activity account, it's fundraisers, not costing the school district any money. We pay them 19, we're just making a little bit less then. We have to work a little bit harder then to generate a little more money for the uniforms and so on, but it doesn't, concession workers does not come out of the district funds, if that makes sense.
Thank you for clarifying.
Activity workers do when they're working an event like working a table at football or basketball or swimming, whatever it might be.
Do we advertise for these positions or how do you find the students to work these and the adults?
Our HR department has had this open for quite a few years and I've only had a couple applicants that have reached out to me. I was able to find a retired member of our community who's been outstanding, who actually thought he was signing up for five to 10 hours a week. And the spring, he was working 25 to 30 and he felt like he was back his old job again. So he gives me a hard time. He happens to be a friend of mine from church, so I was fortunate to get him to come and help. And he saved the day in the concession stand. And those of you that went to spring sports, you probably recognized seeing Jerry at almost all the home events. So he came in handy definitely this spring.
But I do know Jeremiah and have been collaborating this summer and changing one of their work responsibilities to make more connections between the ed and activities. There will be another person as another layer from community ed that's gonna connect back to activities and make sure that we have people at events to make sure that we have activity hosts because it sure does look, that's the professional look with that position that we want to. A lot of districts have this and both Gary and Jeremiah are passionate about making that come to life this, come to life this year so that when you walk in, you know who's in charge and you know how to get them answered.
This will hopefully help our second shift custodians, too, the hosts in the buildings. It's, their internal activities for, whether it's community ed or activities, a lot of it falls on our custodians if there isn't someone else there to be in charge. It will help them as well.
Do you have any problems with honesty with time cards?
No, because there's always an administrator on for our sporting events, whether it's me or one of our principals. So we know like when the game's gonna end and, and we grab the money at the end and put it away in the safe and we know when the contest is done. So no, I have never had that issue as far as that goes.
And how much of a pain is it to include all these few-hour people in payroll every period?
I'd say a big one.
Once they get a routine, I think that's it. I mean, the beginning of the school year, beginning of new seasons, different things where you have maybe some new things happening, but they do pretty good as long as it's good communication, clear outline of who's getting paid what and some consistency. You can see a lot of the same dollar amounts. There's not a lot of variation in these just because it makes it a lot easier to cross-check out a payroll.
Was it just four years ago that those were all over the board?
All over the board.
Community ed?
Worked hard to kinda bring them, reunite them.
And we're trying to keep all the adults and student workers pretty much for similar work, getting a similar rate, so it doesn't matter anything in between so we could share based on what the jobs are, so.
I'd say on a busy sports night, like in the winter, when we have hockey and basketball and swimming and even wrestling, everything going on at once, there are nights that we have 30 people counting the officials that are in working for us. So next morning, we're doing the payroll sheets and it does take a lot of time.
Who does the payroll sheets?
I do. If it's sports.
There, otherwise it's, community ed is either on function electronically or they're on paper going through our office.
All right, can you scroll down a little bit? Kevin, we'll let Jeremiah talk a little bit about community ed.
All right, so for community ed hosts, activity hosts are interchangeable, just kinda depends on what the events are, so it's the same rate of pay. For our instructors, we're not making a change on that. Most of that is a 73% split of registration fees, so this, as they. Most of that is a seventy-third split of registration fees, so as they get more, participants they get paid more. If they get less participants, they get paid less for doing teaching, painting class or different classes that may be offered. When we have apparel working for us, they get a blended overtime rate for that. And then we're gonna raise our auditorium techs. We'll do a little bit more because they're running all the sound and lights within the auditoriums here, school or the high school, so it's a little more specialized for general work. And then all of our student workers will go down to match the other student work, or the student work, based on whatever, if it's concessions, if it's a student tech, field work, being a teacher, B. And then a couple of years ago, we did raise our pool staff as well. That's also a little more specialized. They have to have licensures to be a lifeguard or a swim instructor, so we're giving them a bump raise. They get, they start, a starting rate of fourteen, and after so many hours, then they move up to the sixteen fifty. Same with swim instructors, if they work two hundred, three hundred hours, then they get a pay raise. So attention, we have a very good job of maintaining the same pool staff year after year after year. They can train, pay for three or four years through college and high school. Then we get down to magic adventures. Our adult staff are all fall under the para contract. We have a site lead who's above them and helps run day-to-day operations with our site leads, so they, on a separate contract, they get higher rate because they're helping supervise the staff. And then we are raising our student rate to fourteen. They do very similar work, but they can't fall under the para contract. There's that distinction, but once they do turn eighteen, slide into the para contract, they're eligible. As I say, everybody else, where Gary is having that time, having a hard time finding work to do that, so having, incentivizing the best way we can to have them work other than promoting for childcare, it's like, you don't have to work nights and weekends. It's done at six o'clock. You know, because like, I can make fifteen, sixteen dollars at Target or Pizza Ram, so just be, that's the marketplace, and we have to be competitive to get good quality workers that want to work for us. Because once they come, they enjoy it, it's just getting them in to work, because they do stay. Any questions on those?
Any questions for Jeremiah? Thank you. This is an action item, so for the board, we are, need a motion to approve the proposed rates.
I have one question for Jeremiah.
Certainly.
Can you go back up to the AV help? So that went from eighteen fifty to twenty-one fifty. Why the big jump there?
We haven't changed that one for a couple of years. So, and it's, I think, about the only, we've only had about two that have worked, Thor would be one of them, Gavin. And we gotta entice more people to come in and get.
Or is the best there is, and you already got him?
Thor's very busy. He won't be around.
He's leaving. Come on, Thor.
Mark, I will share that we've had community comments before Thor and Gavin were put in that position because we didn't really have a consistent level of expertise in the tech booth. And I've heard only good things since they've begun. It's really provided a level of consistency and professionalism that we didn't have before, and we're hearing from our community ed partners that they're much happier with the situation moving forward.
We do require anybody who's using, unless they're having a basic, like, you know, we just want the projector on, the lights on, you have to, we have a staff on to run your stuff. Lucy comes in, you can't just have the lights on and run the dance show. You have to set the lights, run the lights, run the music back in there. The constant renters have experience. Cars comes in, no more.
Just to give a shout out to Thor and Gavin behind the audiovisual stuff back there, I think this year's River Fest was Friday night in the high school auditorium, and that was the best lit and sound, I think, I've heard in, ever. So I thought the sound was really good, and there was actually lighting, colored lighting and exciting lighting.
A lot of our auditorium techs is part of, we rent the facility, part of their personnel expenses, which are totally rate to rate costs, so it's internal, that's different. They're renting, because that is required.
So we're looking at a lot of big jumps here, and I can appreciate it in the, in the world that we live in right now. People are having a really hard time finding good talent for good positions, and there's a lot of competition for it. You're seeing a lot of rates go up. The challenge with that is, you can't bring them back down. They stay there. And then they have to inch up, you know, our two and a half percent, our five dollars, ten dollars from there. So we're just setting a new precedent going forward. And so a lot of times, in, in other areas of the world, what's happening, other areas of business, let me say, what's happening, instead of raising the rate from fifteen to nineteen, is we'll raise you from fifteen to seventeen, and when you perform, there's a little, there's a gift card, or it's two hundred dollars here and there as a bonus. And we already heard that it's hard to manage. So that introduces another difficulty, and I don't know what the dollars are here, if we're talking about a hundred thousand dollars over the course of a year, or if we're talking about twenty-five thousand dollars. If it's twenty-five, I don't care. If it's a hundred, I care.
Wouldn't be anywhere, most of ours are not even gonna get to twenty-five in the community ed realm. Thousand a year of expenses extra.
Yeah, but all of these, I think, the community ed and the activities together, we probably have a pretty good file together when we get done with payroll for the year. Tina?
Typically, our subs, it's been ten to fifteen thousand as an add when we increase sub rates. I haven't looked at activities or community ed, because normally there's revenue sustained.
I think the sub thing, I mean, we're getting into teacher contract there, that's a little bit more difficult, but when we're talking about community ed and activities, maybe there's some room to play with that. I just want us to be prepared before we vote, that we go to nineteen, we go to twenty-one fifty, we're never coming back down to seventeen, because, well, inflation settled back down, not everything's as expensive as it was in 2023, so now we can pull it back down, and it doesn't happen.
I know, we're not going back there. We haven't done it, this will be, last time we did this was two years ago, so we try to redo it every couple of years and just kind of look, you know, if, you know, in the future, if we're having good success of doing that, that's why the lifeguarding and swim instructors, they can get a bonus after doing so many hours of proving themselves in staying, and as they get, they get, they get the pay increase, kind of like for childcare staff as high school kids, they get a pay increase because they move to the, into the para contract, so longevity increases.
Yeah, as a business owner, from my experience, the increases just continues to grow, right? Not gonna go back fifty years and be at that hourly rate. So, I mean, all of this looks reasonable from what I've seen, from my business and my husband's business, and what the going rate is now, so.
I think it's a great question, and I just want to point out, too, that when it's through community ed and Jeremiah's office, it goes back onto the renter, so they get billed for all of our hourly rates, and they have to cover that, correct? So it's not a blow to the school district. Whoever's coming in and renting our facility, they have a little more expense upfront, and then they'll have to pass that on to their users as well, so.
So, any concerns with that, Jeremiah, with having these people come rent from you?
No, we're very reasonable overall. It's not, everybody, all the other school districts have their, so if you're going to Big Lake, you're paying for event hosts, you're custodians, you're paying for swimming, you're paying for all these extra, everybody's kind of told you have extra personnel expenses. If they want to avoid certain personnel expenses, then they pick, you know, certain locations or certain days when they can keep their, you know, event personnel staff costs lower. So we work with everybody. It is, so, and some of our large ones don't even, second, it is, it is, it's the cost of doing business, they might just say, oh, we'll charge an extra couple of dollars a day, or get a lot more money, so.
Mark, Jeremiah, Gary, I met with many of our user groups. We invited them all to the table, all the youth sports, a representative from each sport, three times last year, and what it found out is that they all said that our community ed, the city was hoping that we would raise rates because they come to us first. So we do have a competitive market, and actually, we have room to grow that and still be in the middle of the pack or lower in comparison to the area of school districts.
I'm on that committee, if you want to know about it. Or do we want to say that for later?
Now you're gonna chime in?
Actually, I think we're on the low end.
That was just my.
Jeremiah does a good job of, and I trust him, but I think, I think we have very, very reasonable rental, rentals for our facilities, you consider the quality of our facilities, and then we have supervisors there, everything we provide, we're probably a little bit, that's why people come back.
Yeah, that was just my question on the budget summary that we approved last month on the community ed. Right now, the projected change in the fund balance is about thirty-seven thousand on there, and how close are these projections to that?
Me, it's always a best guess, just because of program.
Yep.
So like, even when these go up, and we're gonna have additional, our revenue stream's gonna go up, which a lot of us.
Yeah, your expenditures and revenues are basically balanced out on there.
All right, we're getting to a point where we're gonna need more revenue.
Yep. Yeah, yeah.
Our just one is always childcare, because they're getting state grants to help offset our staff costs increase, because they don't want us to raise our rates, too, so it helps a lot, pay staff more, but still keep our rates competitive for.
Okay.
Any additional discussion by the board? Jeff's leaning forward.
I just, sometimes we forget that it's not a general fund expenditure, so that both Gary and Jeremiah support these numbers through their funds of their programs, so.
That may be true, but if we are gonna increase the cost, then they may need to increase the ticket price for us to go watch the events to be revenue neutral. And that's the thing that I think we have to watch as time goes on, because there are comments out there from families and, you know, oh my gosh, we spent this much money just going to watch our grandkids participate in this activity, you know? And you try and say, well, you know, you're giving back, you know? Part of the reason we can do this is because you come watch. I'll be quiet now, sorry.
I think they're great comments, and I think they are things to watch in the future, but I think right now, we just, we need to be able to recruit people to have these events, and we need to get good people in here to, to provide the customer service our community wants, to provide the opportunities for grandparents to come to the events and do community ed things, so. Hopefully, this is, it's a jump, but hopefully, this is something that's gonna stabilize it for a while as well.
Any further discussion? Okay, board members, we have an action item in front of us, proposed increases for the substitute teacher positions, activities, and community education.
I make a motion to approve the substitute activities and community ed pay rates as presented.
Motion made by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the increase to the substitutes' activities and community education pay rates, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number eight, innovation and leadership. We have our facilities, I'm sorry, our Director of Business Services, Tina Burkholder, to present our ten-year LTFM plan to the board. Thank you, Tina.
Thank you. I have different hats, you can call me facilities for a little bit.
Sorry.
All right, so tonight, I'm asking for approval of our ten-year long-term facility maintenance plan. Long-term facility maintenance revenue can be used for deferred maintenance projects that prevent further erosion of our facilities, so kind of like-for-like. It cannot be used for new construction, remodeling, energy-efficient projects, or violence prevention and security projects. However, there's been a lot of efforts to include some of that in there, and then, excuse me, this past legislation, the state did approve language where the ten-year plan has to address adding gender-neutral bathrooms to, for accessible to students at each site. So in this ten-year plan, I did allocate some funds in some years to address the sites that we need those. I don't have cost estimates, because that'll consider more thought in this process, as we have to look at our building capacities to see how many bathrooms we have to have. We don't want to reduce the number of stalls, for example, you know, if our capacity is at a certain level. And if you do touch bathrooms, and it's a certain percent of remodeling, you have to make sure we're complying with all ADA accessibility. So a lot more planning and cost estimates needs to go into that, but just try to put something in there to show the state that we will address it further down the road when we can get more planning into it. So in our ten-year plan, there's a couple attachments in here. It's the resolution that you'll approve tonight that we'll send to the state. It's the statement of assurances that the superintendent will sign. And then there's a revenue ten-year projection sheet that shows, based on the number of students estimated, we get three hundred and eighty dollars per student for the long-term facility maintenance. You do get extra for any projects that are over a certain dollar amount, so we did get extra money for our Pinewood project that was approved in 2019. So that's in that revenue projection estimate. And then you have a worksheet of your ten-year expenditures, and you have to look at both of these sheets together, and you have to make sure you have, you can't have a deficit plan. And so you can have a couple of years where the fund balance dips negative, but I try to avoid that, looking at our current fund balance and making sure we always have a positive balance, and try to place projects where the need is, and then also where the dollars fit. So looking at all together, that's the ten-year plan, and then also a ten-year detailed listing of a lot of last year's projects, just moving forward. We were in the process of developing a ten-year plan, trying to look at what the needs are, having a column, low, medium, high priority, and then current cost estimates, and then kind of projecting that out. That wasn't quite finished yet with all those details, so hopefully, when the Buildings and Ground Director is, has started, he can take a look at this more deeply with the head custodians and our construction manager, and kind of get this updated if needed, and maybe in December, January, come back to a revision if it's necessary. But somebody with more building experience that can really dive in and take a look at this. So this has to be approved by July 31st, and since we only have one meeting in July, need approval tonight to approve our ten-year long-term facility maintenance plan.
Empress received all of these links and documents a week or so ago, so we've all had time to take a look through them and ask our questions individually as well. Does anyone have any further discussion about the ten-year LTFM?
I just have one question for clarity. On the dollar amounts here, it's not a spend per year for a capital year, so if you did not spend it all in one year, that money then moves forward to the next year, correct?
Yep, yeah. If we don't use it, it'll roll over, and that's kind of nice also, because our summer months are June, July, August, and our fiscal year ends in Jaloon, June, so you never know if a roof project will finish all in June, or be half and half, or whatnot, so it gives you that flexibility to roll over into the next year. And like I said, actually, in last year's ten-year plan, we, we're gonna have a roofing project this year, but rates were unknown and skyrocketing with oil, depending on what roof type you did, and there was a lot of uncertainty if you even could get vendors to do a roof project in the summer. And that's our prime time of when we need to do our summer projects. So that just stayed in our fund balance, and we'll roll over and push it down another year.
I didn't get a chance to ask you this before the meeting, but you brought up the general, gender-neutral restroom.
but you brought up the general, gender neutral restrooms. We have in here 2025, 150 grand, 2026, 175, and then in 2020, 2031, 2032, there's 250 grand each year. What was the thought behind how much goes in each year?
It was, again, looking at the fund balance to see what I could put in there. And knowing that, so we already have gender neutral sites at Eastview Elementary. All our kindergarten classrooms have bathrooms for students. And at our middle school, we have a family bathroom. So we really have to look at Pinewood, Little Mountain, and the high school. And I'm not sure, you know, if this includes locker rooms. So if it doesn't include locker rooms, then maybe I put that towards the further year to see, you know, when we have more funds available. Or, you know, if we need to move it up because, you know, we have the need at this location versus another location, then it's looking, taking a look at the roof projects, delaying that another year and making the bathrooms a priority. So there, there is no rhyme or reason besides that's where it fit. And if we need to move projects around to make it fit where, when the need is urgent, we'll do that, but just need the time to plan.
Are there any deadlines for the, for the bathroom remodels?
It just said to address it in our 10-year plan.
Here, let's see, you have what roofs are going to need what? Let's see where other roofs.
Our, so our oldest roofs are here at the middle school. And when we looked at it two or three years ago, it had the highest need. High school and Pinewood are also have the highest need. The high school roof, you know, 1999, and we haven't had any major replacements, only repairs. So that's 24 years of a roof that probably should only last 20 years. So it is important that we start looking at that high school. I know we have some problems at the kitchen. And we looked at possibly coming to the board sooner than later to do a request for bids. But knowing, you know, doing a roof over September, October, when kids are in the building, you know, they're going to smell that smell and is that the best? But I know that's where our biggest need right now at the high school is.
Asbestos removal?
Yeah, sometimes you never know with a project what you might discover. So just putting a little bit there.
Just didn't know if we still move asbestos or just kind of, just in case?
Just in case.
Any further questions or discussion from the board for Tina Burkholder?
I just want to say very nice job, Tina, once again, in preparing the reports for us for the board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
So board members, this is an action item. We have before us the 10-year long-term facilities maintenance plan.
You just need the highlighted part?
Yeah, the bold.
Result of School Board of Independent School District Number 82, State of Minnesota, approves attached fiscal year 25 long-term facility maintenance 10-year plan.
Seconded.
A resolution by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Jamie Seaborn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. Thank you, Tina. And on to item number B, the second reading of policies and handbooks. We have quite a list of them, but we've been working on these for quite some time and Superintendent Olson is going to elaborate.
I'd like to start with Barb Wilson, who has done a amazing job with our elementary principals in preparing for today. And then same thing with our second, every silver collaboration in secondary principals. And then our elementary principals has been absolutely fantastic. Both Clay and Barb continue to work with our principals to give those handbooks to a place that they feel good at. Came to our policy committee. And I think it's important to know that the policy committee, I mean, they met for three hours today. Prior to this meeting, policy isn't something that is done quickly. I know I've often heard Mr. Hegley say, when does it end? And it's just like roofs, they don't, it doesn't end because it's always being updated. I know all of these policies here and a lot of other policies that we worked on today are, what we're going to find out, they're going to actually be a little bit more fluid than maybe we were used to. We were used to getting them wrapped up and then moving them forward and revisiting them in three years. That will not be the case with the amount of language that is in legislation right now. Like, we are bringing forward policies today for second reading. These policies and a whole myriad of other policies will constantly be worked on because of the amount of language. And while the language is awesome and we're ready to take it and implement it, it's also challenging because it gives people a lot more to digest and to figure out, unwrap, to see how it, each one, each piece of language plays out in your school system. Because every school system needs to take the language and make sure that they have plans moving forward. So we feel really confident that on today, that our handbooks are as good as they can be. That doesn't mean that they're not constantly being looked at by our principals. They're the ones that use them day to day. There will be changes that pop up and they will bring them forward to the policy committee so that you're aware of that. And then just as a full board to know that that's going to maybe be happening more often. Policy is not going to be just a three-year cycle, but policy is going to be a continuous cycle where some will have to be revisited even quicker. But today, policy 619, staff development is ready for second reading. Of course, we looked at it again today through the lens of legislation. But we do feel, policy 619, policy 606, core instruction, policy 501, school weapons, policy 517, student recruiting, policy 525, violence prevention, policy 528, student parental, family, and marital nondiscrimination, policy 529, notification of staff regarding placement of students with violent behavior, are all policies that have been given the time they need and the legal lens has been applied and they are ready to come forward here for second reading.
I'd like to just add to what Superintendent Olson said. We're very fortunate as a board that we have a subscription to the policy services at the Minnesota School Association where there is one dedicated attorney who spends myriad hours and is available to us pretty much 24/7 for policy development and specific wording so that we are in compliance with state statutes and all relevant regulations. Just to share from earlier today, we did meet for three hours. We had 30 policies on our list. I think we got through 20, 15, maybe. So as a result of the legislative session we just had, there was an enormous amount of information that came out relevant to school districts that have to be incorporated into our policies moving forward. So I'm just taking this extra moment along with Superintendent Olson because when you see a cluster of policies like that and a quick vote from the school board, it appears that we're just rubber stamping something and that we didn't spend any time on it. But we have spent hours and hours and hours looking through these ahead of time. So it's just maybe my desire to be transparent to the community and to the staff to let them know that how deeply involved we are as a board in policy development here in District 882, so. So we have before us the second reading of policy and handbooks as presented. And this is an action item for the board.
I just wanted to make a comment if I could.
Yes, you can.
On the high school handbook in reference to parking. My personal position is that we shouldn't charge for parking. When I look at our budget summary, our projections is $13.9 million. We generate approximately $48,000 for parking for students. So that policy is still being looked at, the 527.
Correct. I think we also today, earlier today, decided that as we move forward, we're going to have that as a work session topic so that the entire board of six can talk about that issue and debate it and deliberate our policy, how we administer it, and see if there's something that we want to propose for a change moving forward.
If there are other items in the school handbook, these student handbooks, do we want to hold those for a work session or discuss them now?
One of the situations we were in in years past is we didn't approve the student handbooks early enough in the, in the, before the school year starts. We were getting to them much later in the school year. And I feel a responsibility to at least put something in place before the school year starts, even if we have to recall it during the school year to touch it up, make tweaks or adjustments. I think if you don't approve it, then you have this thing lingering and hanging out there and families and students don't really know what the policy is. There's no rule that says we can't recall a student handbook or a policy during the school year if there's a problem or something that needs to be changed. I mean, we saw that during COVID also that we had things we had to be nimble and, you know, adjust to right away when things were changing. So from where I'm sitting, I think we need to move forward so that we have something in place for our principals and our administrators to move forward with, with families as we start with our back-to-school days and, you know, getting families ready for the next school year, even knowing, again, Superintendent Olson said that a lot of our policies may end up being more fluid than we've ever dealt with. We may approve a policy and next month have to recall it again because there's a new change that we've been advised.
But also have to be reflected in here, which is electronic, which is.
Yeah. I know Terry Morrow up at Policy Services literally has rewritten several issues with policies maybe two or three times already this summer as a result of legislation that's come out. So we would all get preliminaries, then we get the next preliminary, then we get the next preliminary, then we'd get a letter of, you know, assuring us that they're still working on it and trying to get questions answered. So maybe that isn't the answer we want to hear, but I think the reality is things are probably going to be fluid for a while. So at least maybe through the fall until some of the questions that are out there to be answered have been answered.
Would you like a tracking system too, if there are things that you would like the policy committee to dive into and look at? Because I know like, you know, you look at just dates and structure of school year. You know, the end of July was the drop date for back, you know, 18 years ago, 10 years ago because of printing. You would, you know, you went and got your bound handbook and then that's what everybody received. And now they are electronic, so like, as you said, they're very fluid. And I think it's, you know, one of those things that if we just knew as a policy committee, pieces of the handbook that you wanted reviewed, it would give us time to go to our diligence because everything takes homework, it takes, so it's just like parking, you know, that one. You know, asking principals like, what are concerns that parents bring forward with parking? You know, asking things, what is the concern behind wanting the change to make sure that we've done our due diligence, to make sure that we're not a district that, you know, flips and flops and, you know, you want to use the legal lens first. And then what I love about policy committees is that they don't just take the legal lens, they do try personalize it to make sure that it's Montessori ready. But you also want that base and that foundation of that legal lens so that you are case law, ready.
I just have some, a few language items to look at, so I'll just pass them on to the committee. Fair enough.
Any other discussion?
Are we going to set a date for the 527? We'll go back to that. Is that going to be September, October? Are we going to push it out to number? Be nice, just to set a date on there.
Going to the full board work session in September, correct?
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, that one we, has been really prolonged process.
And that one wasn't part of this, so.
No, but it's referenced, we're sorry, it's referenced in the high.
Okay.
That's all it is.
Any further discussion, questions? Okay, we have before us the current versions of the student handbooks, the employee handbook, and the policies as listed. And this is an action item. Do I have a motion to approve?
It's all moved.
Second.
Motion made by Jamie Seaborn to approve, seconded by Jeff Hegley. All those in favor of approving the handbooks and policies as listed, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. And now we're moving towards adjourning. I will also announce at this time that Jeff Hegley will be chairing the August 7th meeting as I'm out of town on that day. And so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's all moved.
Second.
Motion made by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. And at 19:57, we are adjourned. Thank you. Whoops, what did I miss now?
Vote.
Didn't vote on the adjourning. We got to vote to adjourn, people. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. No, motion passes six zero. And now at 19:57, we are adjourned. Thank you. We will take a.